We're going to start this board meeting. It is seven o'clock. So first, we actually are having a special meeting first at seven o'clock regarding the MISD biennial election meeting. I'm gonna go ahead and roll taken before we start.
Mr. Bergmeyer.
Here.
Mr. Moses.
Here.
What location are you in? City.
Sorry about that. Wind out, Michigan.
Green here.
Here.
Richards here.
So first part of the MISD biennial election, what does it is the board in two separate meetings must elect a representative from the board to attend the meeting held on June 7th of 2021. And that individual will cast a vote on behalf of this board for one of two candidates to be our representative. So what we have to do in this first meeting, you must consider who your electoral representative from the board this board is going to be. And in the next meeting, we will formally appoint that person and inform that person how the board wishes for them to vote. So that said, like I said, the meeting is on June 7th, which I believe is a Monday. And we will have one person designated. Are there any nominations to attend? Or volunteers to attend this meeting on the backboard? Or nominations?
I'll nominate Lisa Bergmeyer.
Thank you.
I'll support if she's willing to take that on.
I can accept that nomination. Any others? Okay, I'm gonna go through and read the Anchor Bay School District as a constituent district of the Macomb Intermediate School District. And the revised school code provides that board members of the MISD be elected by and by and on the first Monday in June by an electoral body composed by one person designated by the board of each constituent school district. And in accordance with section 614.2 of the revised school code MCL 380.6142, this board must consider the resolution designating its representative on the MISD electoral body at not less than one public meeting before adopting the resolution. Therefore, we are resolved that this board does consider the designation of Lisa Bergmeyer as the electoral representative of this board for the biennial election meeting to be held on June 7th, 2021. And who as an alternate?
I'll nominate Pat Green. I'll have to deny the nomination.
I'll nominate John Drew.
Don't he just said he would get a count?
I will second the self nomination.
And Dennis Richards as the alternate in the event the designated representative unable to attend. All resolutions and parts of resolutions insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution are rescinded.
So I'll make that motion then.
A motion by Mr. Middlestat to accept the resolution for considering the designation of an electoral representative for the election meeting. For a second.
Second.
Go ahead and assuming there's no expression, go ahead and call the roll.
Mr. Middlestat, yes, Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mr. Bergmeyer.
Yes.
Mr. Moses.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Ms. Knox.
Yeah.
Mr. Richards.
Yeah.
I motion passes. Like I said, this will will be going into our regular meeting after we adjourn here. And we'll re bring this back up formally one more time. And then we will just formally approve it in a second meeting. I will take a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
Great, we had a motion by Mr. Green, seconded by Ms. Knox. Go ahead and call the roll.
Mr. Green, yes. Ms. Knox.
Yeah.
Mr. Bergmeyer.
Yes.
Mr. Moses.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Drew. Yes.
Mr. Middlestate.
That meeting is adjourned at 7:06. And now I will call to order at 7:06, the regular school board meeting. All right, we will break for three minutes and then come back and recall our role and pledge of allegiance. Okay, now it is 7:10 and we will call to order our regular board meeting. Let's rise for the pledge of allegiance. Can I call the roll for this meeting, please?
Mr. Bergmeyer.
Here.
Mr. Moses.
Here. Wind out, Michigan.
Here. Ms. Knox.
Here.
Mr. Richards.
Here.
Mr. Drew.
Here.
I want to make a couple agenda amendments. Item, if you're following on the agenda, item number three, hiring of the new superintendent. We are still in the midst of contract negotiations, so that one is going to be held off on. Item 4C, by the request of this union, is requested to also no longer remain on the agenda for tonight. And then item number 10, closed session for collective bargaining, we will be doing that. But we are also going to add closed session for 8H, reviewing attorney-client relations. So we would be going into closed session for both of those reasons. There's not expected to be any action following those items, except for possibly if the board doesn't wrap up our attorney-client information, we may be setting a special meeting to go further with our attorney on that one. But no formal action with the board following those items. Okay? So we will roll into open forum. At this point, the public's invited to comment on items on the agenda. Comments about specific employees should be directed to them personally and not included in this public forum. I have a in-house submission from Jen Frederick.
Thank you.
So you hit the button on the end of the mic. There's a little button on the bottom.
Okay, how's that? Everybody hear me? All right, we'd like to take this opportunity to express our sincere gratitude to the board and administration for ensuring the timely hiring of the first of our two new band directors. As you know, the Anchor Bay Band Program and its over 500 student musicians from grades six through 12, that band never ever slows down. Our marching band season begins in just 20 very, very short days. We start with our pre-camp where we welcome our new marchers and prepare 170-member ensemble to march their first parade together. Sectionals throughout the summer culminate in a week-long band camp taking place the first week of August. While we are grateful to soon have Mr. Florrie in place, there is concern among our students and parents alike that Mr. Arancheck's position as middle school and high school instrumental music instructor and marching band assistant director has not yet been filled. Our concern rests in the timeliness of identifying and hiring a highly qualified candidate in what you know is currently a very, very competitive job market. Music teachers are on the critical shortage list in Michigan, and there are currently more than 20 secondary band and orchestra jobs available in our state. There are four here in Macomb County alone. The Anchor Bay student musicians deserve to have the best person that we can find to ensure the quality delivery of our award-winning music education program continues. As the parent of a current sophomore, my son was in seventh grade when Mr. Kluckner retired. When he received his eighth-grade schedule, next to band, it simply said, "Staff 1", because no replacement band director had been identified for the middle school. He currently has Mr. Arancheck for symphonic band. You can imagine the continually mounting anxiety that he and his bandmates are feeling for their junior year band experience and their soon-to-be-starting marching season. Our goal is to remain an award-winning band program. With your support in identifying and hiring Mr. Arancheck's replacement before the new marching band season starts, you can ensure continued music excellence here at Anchor Bay. On behalf of the boosters, the many, many, many hundreds of parents, and most importantly, our 500 student musicians, we thank you for your continued support. Thank you. I also have an in-house submission from Tom Braun.
All right, hello everyone. Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. Again, my name is Tom Braun, the president of the Anchor Bay Band Boosters here at Anchor Bay. I just wanted to speak on tonight, you guys are going to be approving the new hire for the high school instrumental music band director position. And I just wanted to let everybody know that Mr. Visna, the retiring band director, was very involved in the interview process of selecting this candidate. And I was actually invited to come and sit in on the second interview, the teaching interview. So I was able to see the two candidates. We really have a good discussion with Mr. McDonald and Mr. LaPerry Air and Mrs. Gonzalez. And Mr. Visna and I both would like to recommend approving the hire of the new high school band director.
Thank you. Are there any virtual submissions?
No.
So we will move on to general business. We have bills payable.
Hi, good evening, Board of Education. Before you this evening, you are presented with the bills payable summary in detail for the month of April. April expenditures totaled $726,895. Additional questions were sent to me in advance of this meeting by Mr. Richards, and I do want to make the community aware that those questions were responded to. If the board has any additional questions, I'd be happy at this time to answer those questions for you.
Hearing none. Is there a motion to accept the bills payable?
I'll make a motion.
Support.
So motion to accept as presented by Mr. Moses, supported by Mr. Green. Any discussion? Okay, go ahead and call the roll, please.
Mr. Moses.
Yes.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Bergmeyer.
Yes.
Ms. Knox.
Yes.
Mr. Richards.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mr. Middlestate, yes.
Thank you. We're gonna move into personnel. Starting with probationary and tenure teacher recommendations.
Good evening. Yes, you have before you this evening the recommendation to approve our teachers who are progressing towards tenure. It's been a long time since I've been here. Yes, can we, we recommend approval of that.
Is there a motion to approve tenure and probationary recommendations as presented to the board?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
To approve.
Motion by Mr. Moses, seconded by Ms. Knox to approve tenure and probationary recommendations. Any discussion? Go ahead and call the roll, please.
Mr. Moses.
Yes.
Ms. Knox.
Yes.
Mr. Bergmeyer.
Yes.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Richards.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mr. Middlestate, yes.
Next, we have counselors, psychologists, speech pathologists, and social workers recommended for continuing contracts for 2021, 2022.
Yes, before. Yes, before you, you have a list of our current counselors, psychologists, and speech pathologists and social workers that we are recommending for continuing contracts for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Right, is there a motion to approve the recommendations of continuing contracts for these employees as presented?
So moved. Support.
So the motion was made by Mr. Drew, supported by Mr. Green. Any discussion? Go ahead and call the roll for that.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Bergmeyer.
Yes.
Mr. Moses.
Yes.
Alex. Yes.
Mr. Richards.
Yes.
And Mr. Middlestate, yes.
Motion passes. The next is the higher recommendation.
Yes, this evening it's my pleasure to recommend Mr. Alexander Florrie to be our high school band teacher, our band director, secondary band director. He is an accomplished musician. He is currently with Fitzgerald Schools. Prior to that, he was with Chesney for many years. He is here this evening. Want to stand up?
All right, is there a motion to approve the new hires presented?
I'll move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Middlestate, seconded by Ms. Knox. Any discussion?
Just one question. When's the effective start date? Does it start right away at July 1st?
No, he'll start, he'll start June 20th, the Monday.
Okay.
I believe it's June 20th. Yes, yeah, because band camp will be starting.
Very good. That's just what I wanted to hear.
Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Middlestate, yes. Ms. Knox.
Yes.
Mr. Bergmeyer.
Yes.
Mr. Moses.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Mr. Richards.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
All right, congratulations, sir. Thank you and.
Welcome aboard. You have big shoes to fill, sir.
She said, I know you do. Hey, thank you so much, everybody. I'm incredibly excited about it. I wanted to show my face so you guys could feel a little bit of relief knowing that at least one of your leadership positions has been, you know, taken over. And I'm excited to grab the reins and go full-fledged, so I'm excited to be a tar. Thank you, everybody here for approving, and I'm incredibly thankful and enthusiastic about the future. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you, and congratulations again. How we will move next, a resolution regarding a change to our Mandarin program. Yes.
That's usually my problem. Welcome.
You have before you this evening a resolution for layoff for the three Mandarin teachers. The reason for this is we are moving in a different direction with our elementary specials. It's not, this is not a reflection of these three teachers or their performance in any way. It was, we're just moving in a different direction due to there was a lack of interest in Mandarin at the secondary level. So it didn't really make sense for us to continue it at elementary if students were not going to continue on at the secondary level. And so that is the need to lay off these teachers and replace them with a different special.
Do you need me to read this in its full? So I will accept a resolution. Sorry.
Just resolution.
I will accept a resolution as presented, approving the layoff status.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Green, seconded by Mr. Moses. Any discussion?
I have just one question with the resolution. I understand what we're doing, but the resolution does specify reduction in teaching personnel, and you're indicating we're just changing, and that isn't a reduction. Says the factors that determine that a reduction in teaching personnel. But what you indicated is we've put somebody else in there instead of them, so that's not a reduction, correct?
Well, it's a, it's a layoff to particular members, which would result in a reduction of that personnel.
No, this is based on these factors that determine that a reduction in teaching personnel is necessary. I don't know. That's pretty clear. I'm just trying to understand. I understand what we're doing. I don't have any big issues. I just, we're doing a resolution and saying reducing teaching positions, personnel or not.
This resolution was drafted by the board attorney, and she was aware of what we were doing. I'm not sure.
Did you did explain that they're not reducing, that we're just replacing?
I did.
I believe it partially has to do with the certifications that would be required for what we're going to begin in the new venture and then what these individuals would be certified for as well. Don't partially match.
Well, I understand. I just said that you were approving a resolution. It says reducing teaching personnel, but we're not.
Could we just change it to change? Or replacing?
Replacing.
Replacing. I mean, instead of saying reduction, I give.
I agree with Mr. Middlestate. Yeah, you're right. He makes a good point. Yeah.
Well, it says program needs as well. It says, has thoroughly reviewed its projected fiscal conditions for the next school year, program needs, enrollment levels, and staffing requirements. And has determined that a reduction in staffing personnel is necessary based on our staffing needs.
I think we can, if the maker of the motion just adds to it, you know, we'll pass it with the attorney to work out final language that.
It's just a question. I don't want to hold it up. It's just, it's just. And I, usually in the past, in the past, these kind of things were based on we had to reduce people and we put out layoff. No, this is really a year, and this isn't really, this doesn't apply. But I just, if you can give me an answer on that, I don't want, I'm not going to hold it up. I just thought it was just contradictory what we're saying.
Do you want to do something different?
Mr. Moses, I just get, just get clarification that I just did. I need clarification of the attorney. If that's the way it should be, that's fine. If not, just bring it back to us. It's not going to change anything really. We're still going to lay off. I just don't want them coming back and saying, well, you guys told us you were laying us off because you were reducing personnel, but you just replaced me with somebody else. I still want that. I don't want to pass, we laid people off and then we, because of reduction, basically meant somebody else couldn't come back in and say, we couldn't replace them immediately and they would have an argument saying, you laid me off because you were reducing personnel, but you really didn't. So that was just my point. I still, I would have brought it up earlier. I just did. I just read through it in more detail today.
We'll see clarification.
Is there a motion?
I think there's already one.
Sorry, I forgot we did that.
Yeah, so I'll agree the roll. Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Moses.
Yes.
Mr. Bergmeyer.
Yes.
Ms. Knox.
Yes.
Mr. Richards.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mr. Middlestate, yes.
Motion passes. Continuing with personnel, we have a request to, for the board to take up again, the contract extensions. We'll start with the supervisors and coordinators.
Yes, you have before you a list of the coordinators and supervisors, and we are recommending the contract extension through June 30th, 2024.
Who requested the contracts? They're already automatically approved, correct?
No.
I thought they're, after a certain date, they're automatically extended.
Well, I think that goes back to the discussion we were having about, you know, an extension of time on a contract versus a not renewal.
I thought the way the contract's read is that if you don't deny or approve, it's automatically extended for a year. That's what's in the contract.
That's if the contract were expiring on June 30th. It would have, it would have automatically extended another year. But this is an extension of their current contract.
I really got me confused. There's two different contracts.
We were, no, if we got to the end of their, well, there are two years remaining right now. Those two years, we got to the end of that, and we didn't take any action of any kind, we would automatically renew for another year at least. But the board, a couple of meetings ago, did not renew to extend for another three years from this point. They're asking that we reconsider that and re, and extend for three years, reset that three-year clock.
Yes.
They asked us, they came to us for that?
So Mike came to us. Mike requested that we put these on the agenda and pull them on today.
As well as the staff themselves.
And he decided to exclude the other group.
Well, the next group, the principals group will be taken up next as they requested the same. I believe originally the direct, the office directors also requested, however, once this meeting agenda was put out, I was contacted by their union rep asking to remove it, that they wanted to rescind their request.
It's just weird that he's asking to take it back up and he's not here. That's interesting. Is he not with us virtually, possibly? Mr. Sizemore?
Let me look. Not seen unless he's under some other different name.
Their last name.
Landon, right?
Oh, A.M.
Oh.
I don't know Landon. No, only one mic.
Just find it out. I guess I generally don't see unions. I guess I generally don't see unions dividing up their groups.
Well, they are separate. They are separate groups.
No, I understand they're separate groups, but when ASME comes in, or anybody else, they don't separate.
Well, ASME is one group. Transportation and custodial and food service are all under one contract. This would be like lumping the teachers and the pairs together. They're both represented by M E A, but we don't, they're not, right, they're separate, just represented by the same union.
Separate units, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to approve the contract extension through June 24th for supervisors and coordinators.
Is there a second for that motion? I have one second. Motion by Mr. Drew, seconded by Ms. Knox, to approve the extension for the supervisors and coordinators. Any discussion further?
What's the, talking about supervisors, Cory, is she part of this?
She is.
She on the list?
She is.
Yeah. I mean, this is, correct me if I'm wrong, this is pretty common. This is what we've done for years. This is, I mean.
Yes, but there are several years you're supposed to add.
Yeah, some stability forum, some showing faith in your, your, your team, and you believe in what they're doing, and if there's issues, you'll handle it outside of that. And there's ways to do that if need, right?
Yes.
So I don't see an issue with, at all with extending these contracts. We're showing faith in the people that are leading this district, and especially just coming off of the last year and a half that we've had. That's why I didn't understand why we didn't do it the last meeting, but hopefully, if there's support tonight, hopefully, we can again, show faith in the people that are leading this district.
I guess for me, part of the concern is where are we with the, the teacher's contract? And we do one-year contracts with the teachers. I believe this is still pending, and here we are extending a contract that's already in place for another year.
These are their personal contracts. This isn't the collective bargaining agreement. These are their individual personal contracts.
Correct, and I think, and I don't want to speak for the teachers at all, but I mean, I think just judging by the last couple of years that I've been on here, and, you know, I, I think that they would prefer maybe language longer than one year, but money, seeing as we don't know what we're getting year to year, and when it comes to the state, and especially now with COVID and COVID dollars, I think that one year at a time is probably what they would prefer.
So this extension has no financial responsibility, fiscal responsibility? There's no fiscal responsibility with this extension?
Not per se. I mean, if there's some dollars involved, it would just be extending their contract at this point for another year.
If, if a new superintendent came to reorganize, you know, chose to reorganize maybe our organizational structure, say they want to, you know, decrease a position, are we, if we have to decrease a position for some reason or another, do we, are we obligated to find a new place for that employee? If they have three years?
If it's a reduction in staff, if you're, you know, if you're talking about, for example, we're eliminating a position altogether, no, we would not have to.
Anything further? All right, go ahead and call the role.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Ms. Knox?
Yes.
Ms. Bergmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Middlestat, yes.
Motion passes. Similarly, the next one is for the principals, building principals group, which consists of principals and assistant principals in basically the same format and way, but the last was requested to be reconsidered. This would also extend them through June 24th of 2024, resetting their three-year contract.
I'll make a motion to approve extending the principals and assistant principals' contract through June 30th of 2024. Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Drew's, I'm sorry, motion by Mr. Green, seconded by Mr. Drew. Any discussion on this one? Okay, we can call the role.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Bergmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Ms. Knox?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Middlestat?
Okay, motion passes.
Can we, I'm just still concerned about, we're excluding central office.
So it was not Mr. Rathburn or my intent to exclude them. We put them on the agenda originally, because I believe they had also requested for Mr. Rathburn. Their union rep reached out to me on Monday and asked me that they did not want to be reconsidered at this time.
So my concern is, require is that we've got memos through our system. I'm just worried that Mr. Rathburn sent us a memo saying that several board members wanted to reevaluate a couple of these employees. And then we get another memo from you saying we actually went out and spent money on an attorney to see if we could reevaluate somebody that was previously evaluated. So I, you know, I spent several, four last four years, everybody talking about culture of fear, but I, I can't understand how a board president or several board members can go back to Mr. Rathburn, who's been asked to make sure things run right in the district, and ask him to go back and reevaluate somebody that's already been evaluated in the system. I find it very highly, I've never seen anything like this since, I've been on the board since 86, and, and the union rep pulling those approvals off the agenda, it's got to be connected, so I, I it, it's just totally amazing that somebody would go back and try to reevaluate not everybody, but just pick out two people and say, "I want those people reevaluating, because I think I, I don't think the evaluation was done correctly." Yet there are laws, there's a process. Mr. Rathburn never came before us and told us, "Hey, there's people that are not effective on this, on my staff, that I need to reevaluate them." Yes, he's been put in a position beginning of the year, but I just cannot understand you or any other board members could go back to the superintendent and say, "I want other, I want administrators that have been running this district to, to, I mean, the teacher's staff, everybody's gone through hell this year, but they go back and separate." We don't get a chance to do it because the union rep doesn't want to put it on here. I think it's more that they're afraid that something's going to happen where we're going to point out somebody and not approve them. So I, I just, for the record, I think it's just impossible and amazing that you could have done such a thing to ask for a reevaluation.
Is that how, I, I guess I would just ask, I mean, not to get into craziness here, but is, because when I saw that email, maybe I read it too quick, I thought maybe you were looking at that, and that's why the whole questioning was, was it you, was it you that was asking for them to be reevaluated? And that's why you reached out to the attorney?
It came to my attention. I know other board members as well brought it to my attention too, that through a FOIA request, that some members of one of the administrative groups were evaluated by the outgoing superintendent. However, not all of them. And so the question was then raised about the ethics of that situation, and then questioning whether Mr. Rathburn should possibly redo those evaluations so that all the members of the same group, particularly before they might come back before the board to, for a contract extension, have the same opportunity to be evaluated by the same evaluator. We did, because he put it out to the board, we, I did ask the attorney for an opinion on that, that I forwarded to all of you. And her opinion was that because in their contract, evaluation is, and I'm, I'm generalizing here, so don't quote me, but evaluations for the administrators as a whole and the Teamsters contract are supposed to be done by March 1st, and obviously that time has elapsed, so it would not be a good idea for Mr. Rathburn to do that. So at that point, you know, I think that the idea was dropped from any board members that had concerns.
Yeah, not to lay out exactly the attorney's opinion, but they said that everything complied with the revised school code, not just the March 8th one.
Well, yes, she, she did explain to me that the school code sets like a basement that, you know, evaluations must be done for each person one time, you know, within the year. Not that it can't be done on more than one occasion, but really, the, the thing that precluded it from being done again was that March 1st language in their contract.
So if you would have found that you had an evaluation that was on record, that was done through goals, through a process, that if it was end of February, you would request that person be reevaluated? In your state, it's March 1st is your, so you're telling me if somebody gets evaluated, you may have them reevaluated because you didn't like the evaluation?
I actually never requested the evaluations, the attorney did. I never requested the evaluation. Frankly, and Mr. Rathburn can probably attest to this, I basically told him that I want, I would like him, and I knew of other board members as well, that would like him to consider reevaluating those employees out of fairness to their entire group. I stated in absolutely no way am I telling you how to evaluate those employees, because that is not my right. But in fairness, for the entire contract group, I felt that those evaluations should be all done by the same evaluator under the same circumstances, because in my opinion, one, which Ms. Swam touched on, you know, Mr. Rathburn is an interim superintendent, so he's no longer going to be in this role, like, you know, come July 1st. So these administrators would have one outlier evaluation, you know, in their, in their record. And so the way I looked at it was, we had a couple of administrators that did not have that. I don't know how Mr. Rathburn evaluated anybody that he evaluated. And the only reason I saw how Mr. Woodside evaluated anybody was because the attorney requested them for the language. But that was not my concern, how they get evaluated, or what was the result of their evaluation was not my concern at all.
So I was one of those board members that expressed that concern, Mr. Middlestat.
Yep.
And I expressed it, and let's clarify the facts. I didn't request that he go and reevaluate two people of the seven on the list. What I did ask was, why were two evaluated and not the other five? It was an off-cycle evaluation, and if we're going to do evaluations, generally, my understanding from someone who hasn't been around since 1986, but is that we generally do all of those evaluations roughly within the same timeframe as quickly as we can get them done, and that's how we've done them in the past, so I found it a little odd that two people had an off-cycle evaluation while the other five did not. I didn't have any interest in seeing the evaluations, I still don't. My concern was why did we do two and not do seven?
And I, I, I can add to that, that I, I've even told Mr. Rathburn, you know, had, had all seven been done in December, I don't think it would, for me, it would not have been the same concern. But I, I didn't feel like they were on equal footing personally.
Well, the process sets goals and objectives, so those don't change depending on because of evaluation, right? Database.
I guess the only thing I'd say is there seems to be, since the past couple of months on this board, there's a lot of offline conversations that happen, a lot of stuff that we don't know until the last minute, or certain people on this board don't know until the last minute, all the stuff that some people on this board rallied against for the last two years. And now it's happening in a different way. So it's just comical, but we can continue. I mean, it, obviously, there's some headbutting going on, and this, that'll soon work itself out, but you know, there's obviously a reason why the union rep would pull one group right before the meeting, the day of the meeting.
So I guess if I'm saying union rep in the wrong way, it was the steward.
Well, either way, for them to pull it, they were concerned about one of their members. That's the only reason why you would do it. So, but moving on, I guess it's.
All right, we are going to move on. We have bakery bids.
Hi, good evening. Before you have bids for bakery items, which were received for next school year, they were comprised by our food services supervisor, Carrie Youngblood. And these bakery bids are bid out annually. So on the basis of service quality, reliability, and prior vendor experiences, we're bringing to you the saving Aunt Millie's Bakeries for recommendation as the lowest qualified bidder for bakery items for next school year.
I'll make a motion to approve Aunt Millie's Bakeries for the 21, 22 school year as presented.
I'll second that.
Sorry, Mike. Motion by Mr. Green, seconded by Mr. Drew. Any discussion?
Is this their current vendor, or is this a new vendor?
It is the current vendor. Aunt Millie's has been the vendor for the district for the last several years.
Yeah, that's why I just want to correct, right? Thank you.
All right, please call the role.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Ms. Bergmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Middlestat, yes.
Okay, motion passes. We are back to the MISD biennial election, so I will go through and read this one more time. So this time, we are officially designating the electoral representative for the June 7th meeting. The Anchor Bay School District is a constituent district of the Macomb Intermediate School District, and the revised school code provides that board members of the MISD be elected biennially on the first Monday in June by an electoral body composed by one person designated by the board of each constituent school district. And this board has considered the resolution designating its representative on the MISD electoral body at a prior public meeting before adopting the designating resolution. And in accordance with section 614.2 of the revised school code, this board must adopt a resolution which designates its representative to the MISD electoral body and directs said representative to vote for the specific candidate this board supports for each position to be filled on the MISD board, at least on the first ballot taken by the electoral body. I'm going to interrupt myself. We have, so there are two candidates to be considered for the MISD election. One is Ms. Teresa Janist. I believe she's from Roseville. She is the incumbent already on the MISD board, and the other is Sarah, I hope I'm saying it right, Beatty. So is there?
I'll move if we select Teresa again.
Okay.
Second.
All right. So the board does, I'm going to roll this all into one, hereby approve the designation of Lisa Bergmeyer as the representative of this board for the MISD biennial election meeting and electoral body, and Dennis Richards as an alternate. In the event the designated representative is unable to attend, which body will elect one candidate to the vacancies on the MISD board on Monday, June 7th, 2021? The designated representative is directed to cast a vote on behalf of this board for Teresa Janist. The secretary of this board is directed to file a certified copy of this resolution with the secretary of the MISD prior to the June 7th MISD biennial election meeting. All resolutions and parts of resolutions insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution are rescinded. Is there a motion to accept the resolution as declared?
I shall move.
Second.
So a motion by Mr. Middlestat, seconded by Mr. Drew. Any discussion? Please call the role.
Mr. Middlestat, yes. Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Ms. Bergmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Ms. Knox?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. We are going to move on to union communication. Are there any union reps or stewards that would wish to speak tonight?
No one has their hand up.
We will move into a second open forum for public comments. This one is not precluded to agenda items. And again, comments about employees should direct, be directed personally and not included in a public forum. I don't have any. I don't have any in-house submissions.
No one else has their hand up either. Just a quick one, it's Teresa Janey.
Teresa, sorry.
Yep.
Thank you.
We do have Ms. Richards.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
So, just a little bit, and this is kind of on the agenda, but kind of not on the agenda. I, we talk about different contracts, you know, with administrators and principals, and yet, teachers continue to get one-year contracts that are not set up on time. So, I think if we're going to give three-year contracts to employees, it should be all or nothing. Or maybe we reduce to one-year contracts for everybody, but what's right is right, what's fair is fair. So, I'd like that to just be considered in, in future negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, any others? I will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll move.
I'll second. So, motion by Mr. Moses, seconded by Ms. Knox, any discussion?
So, you all read all the little details and all those...
Believe it or not?
Yeah, I did.
I did.
Thank you. Between Sherry and myself, I, we needed someone else to look through.
Yeah, we looked okay, Mr. Middlestat, I looked through.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, please call the roll.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
Ms. Berkmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Middlestat, yes.
Motion passes. We are at superintendent comments.
Good evening, board and members of the public. This week is senior week at Anchor Bay High School. Congratulations to the senior class. I'm very proud of the way the students have conducted themselves throughout all of the challenges presented this year. Earlier this week, I had the honor of attending the senior scholarship night. What an amazing event. We had, seniors received approximately 40 scholarships during that evening, awarded to various members of the senior class, and I want to congratulate all of those scholarship winners. I also want to remind students and parents that they should sign up for one of our three commencement ceremonies. The commencement ceremonies will be held on, I'm sorry, will be held at 12:00 PM and 2:00 PM on Saturday, June 5th. At 12:00 PM on Saturday, June 12th. Rainout dates are set for the Sunday following the original commencement date. Parents should also have received information about our virtual options for next year. The signup for such is this week, so parents are, who are interested in the virtual option for the 2021, or I'm sorry, the 21, 22 school year, should make sure to get signed up this week for that option. I would also like to remind the general public that our open enrollment is going on right now. So, if you know of someone who's interested in attending Anchor Bay Schools, please have them go to our website and enroll their student. Finally, tomorrow at 10:00 AM, Anchor Bay High School will have 23 athletes sign national letters of intent to play college athletics. Congratulations to all of you, and I wish you the best of luck in your collegiate career. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to board comments. Mr. Moses, do you have any?
Yeah, I just want to congratulate the new band director. Excited to see, see the results and, you know, the new leadership. And Mr. Rathbun, just real quick, if you could give me an update or the whole board an update on where we're at with hiring the, the assistant band director, maybe for, you know, board memo tomorrow, or when you get a chance, I'd kind of like to make sure we're not sitting on that. I know those, those positions are filling really fast at other districts. So, I would hate to lose out on a highly qualified candidate, especially since the school's so sought after. I think it's, if we act fast, we can get two really, really highly qualified candidates, but if we wait too long, we may, may miss an opportunity. Other than that, congratulations to all the kids that signed letters of intent. That, that's an amazing, amazing job. And that, have a great night.
Thank you. Mr. Richards?
I'd like to echo Mike, congratulations to the new band director. I'd like to thank everyone that helped during the teacher appreciation week. And I also like to thank all the teachers for what they do day in and day out for the students of this district. Congratulations to the students at Lottie who reached their donation goal of $3,500 for the Heart Association. I'd like to recognize the Anchor Bay High School peer mediation and leadership students who collected 1,192 containers of backrowing cheese for the Feed the Bay program. Congratulations to the Anchor Bay High School track team. They won the MAC White for the four-time and five seasons, awesome job. I'd like to thank Lottie's principal, Ms. Berklund, for dedicating the past 50 years to the Anchor Bay School District. Thank you and congratulations on your retirement. Congratulations to Liam Cannon, Peyton Arnold, Jackson Reese, and Andrew Pril. The esports team qualified for the state tournament after an impressive spring season, advanced to championship match. Congratulations to Jonathan Taylor and Gianna Manasee on being awarded the 2021 Macomb County All Academic Award and Macomb County Dream Team. Gianna was also named to the 2021 National Merit Scholarship Program. I'd like to thank, I would like to thank Mr. TV from Middle School North who recognized that the long jump needed some ground, ground improvements and took it upon himself to make those improvements. Congratulations to Corn Brady, who was the May 2021 Student Athlete of the Month. Congratulations to the girls' track and field team who secured a 2021 MAC White title. Congratulations to Amanda Ursi on breaking the school record in the 300-meter hurdle, 300-meter, meter hurdles, and being crowned regional champion. Congratulations to Corn Brady, who broke the school record in the pole vault with a vault of 11 feet 2 inches. This past Thursday, I volunteered to be an usher at the high school's spring concert. I was amazed with the amount of talent within this group. I want to thank Jane Boswell for her dedication and commitment to this program. I'd like to thank and congratulate the following teachers on their retirement. Jenny Bar, Linda Ebbing, Susan Michaels, Cynthia Coddington, Kim Dolan, Teresa Healy, Sarah Hines, Patricia LaBelle, Ringo, Ringo Mupar? Sorry. Thank you. Scott Horncheck, Amy Osterlin, Lori Sass, Michael Schneider, Barbara Sheldrick, Dave Vinsta, Yvonne Whitworth, Margie Wojcowski, Carol Selby, Mary Ann Prabisky, Robbie Griffin, George Melford, and Deb Rube. Thank you for everything and enjoy your retirement. That's all I have.
Thank you.
First off, welcome to Anchor Bay, Mr. Flurry, you're going to love it here. Second, congratulations to our class of 2021. I'm a parent of a senior myself, and... Getting chipped up, so hold on. It was an unimaginable year for our students, for our parents, for teachers, our counselors, staff, principals, you know, lunch staff, transportation, everybody really worked together to do the best they could for our seniors. And I tell my son, this is your uphill, both ways in the snow story that you're going to tell your kids. It's like, well, when I was a senior, we didn't get any of that fancy stuff. So, hopefully, this has made them stronger and more independent and more creative going forward as adults than we could ever imagine. So, hopefully, they take away a lot of positives from this. And I'm going to thank my son for allowing me to be on stage to help hand up diplomas at his graduation. I don't think he loved the idea, but thank you, Ethan. So, if you see me hug someone, that'll be him. And so, yeah, congratulations, class, you've done amazing, everyone has, really. Thank you. Mr. Drew?
Congratulations to the class of 2021. Like you said, it's been an interesting junior and senior year for them. So, good luck, hopefully, college is a little bit better for you guys. Congratulations to Mr. Flurry, looking forward to seeing what you do over there with the band, and I'm sure the people around you are. And nice to have someone there. Thanks to, I mean, I don't know what we're, with this new superintendent at some point will be coming in, but Mr. Rathbun, this might be our last meeting with you, and thank you for, might not, I mean, you'll still be here with, as assistant, but I think you stepped up, done a, a great job, just want to thank you for that. And then, just real quick on that, I think I might have stepped in some stuff with the teachers, but I'm all for long-term, I just want to go on record here, I'm all for long-term contracts with our teachers. If they want three, four, five years, how we work out the money and do that type of stuff, but I'd be all for it, given though I'm a, a long-term contract. That's what I do in my world as a union negotiator. We negotiate, just negotiated a six-year deal, so it, I'd be all for it. But with that, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Middlestat?
Yeah, welcome to the program. I had just one question, Mr. Rathbun, we were, we have this summer, the fifth grade band program, whatever. What's the status of that, or can you get that to us?
Yeah, I can get you enough data.
I didn't hear yet, we, we put the proposal out there, but I didn't hear whether that, how many people signed up for that, and how that's going.
Yep, I'll get it for them, please.
Other than that, I think everybody's been doing a great job this year so far, and hanging on to the end of the school year, a lot of anxious people wanting to get out, so...
Thank you. Mr. Green?
So, the drawback of going fifth or sixth, you have to hear me say everything everyone else already said. Welcome to our new band director, like I said, you have big shoes to fill. Those folks sitting around you have high, high, high expectations that I'm confident after looking at your resume, that you're going to be able to deliver. Congratulations to our athletes, national signing tomorrow's pretty awesome. I look forward to seeing those pictures on my social media. Congratulations to our seniors, I too, am the parent of a senior. Ms. Knox, what you have to learn to do is not give your son all the information. My son has no idea I'm going to be on stage handing him his diploma, so... Otherwise, I'm likely I'll find a flat tire when I come out that day, because he doesn't want me up there anymore than your son does, but... Congratulations to those seniors, I believe tomorrow is the last day of their exams. It's a wonderful experience to graduate, and, and as I told my son, you spend all this time getting to the top of the, top of the pie chart, top of the triangle in elementary school, and then you go to middle school, you're nothing again. You got to work your way up. Goes on the rest of your life, jobs, marriage, it doesn't matter what it is. So, that's the advice I would give our seniors, is you never really get to where you want to get to. I know prom is scheduled for Friday night. I did just look at the weather, it's 100% rain forecasted for parts of Friday, so I would encourage all of our seniors to make good decisions on Friday, because I'd hate to see someone injured or, or something not go well. So, please make good decisions on Friday. Congratulations to our retired teachers and administrator. Dennis was reading that list, it was like a who's who of, of teachers that I know that have taught my kids, that I raved about, that have done an awesome job and have got my children in a position where they're at, not me, them. So, congratulations on your retirement, you've earned it, 50 years as a principal. I don't think my liver can handle that. And lastly, our teachers, I know we approved the extension today for the supervisors and as well as the other group. And to Mr. Drew's point, we haven't forgot about you. I, I don't have my notes in front of me, but I think it was Mr., one of our, one of our interviewees actually just signed a, had signed a five-year contract with teachers, and then just signed a three-year, and I think that was our MA. I, I don't recall, but that's awesome. That was one of the things that caught my attention about Mr. Jankowski. So, teachers, we know, we see you, we hear you, we haven't forgotten about you. Please don't think that we have, we're just trying to get to that bridge. Thanks.
As for me, I appreciate all of the work our staff has done this year. Congratulations to our seniors graduating as well as our athletes. I did note that the, maybe one first, one group that Mr. Richards didn't name, I saw that our softball team, I spoke with Mac Redchamps, congratulations to them. And also, thank you, you know, to the ABEA, I, I know I'm going to leave people out, but the ABEA as well as the Anchor Bay Community Foundation. I believe the scholarships that went out, you know, totaled above $30,000. So, you know, those organizations are doing a lot for our kids, and I greatly appreciate them, and they were still able to deliver in a year when fundraisers and things were probably vastly limited. So, those, and, and I'm sure there's individuals in there as well, not to forget them. I just know that those two organizations, you know, largely contribute to our scholarships. So, I wanted to, to point those out and thank everybody who, who does all the hard work that ultimately goes out to our kids again in that way. And congratulations and welcome to Mr. Flurry. Look forward to having you onboard with us, and that is all I have. We are going to go into closed session for 8C, which is a collective bargaining strategy, as well as 8H, attorney-client relations. Like I said before, there's not expected to be action following the closed session unless, and while it wouldn't even take action, it would just be the board possibly choosing another, another date to go, to have a meeting into closed session with our attorney if we need to. So, that would be the only information that would likely come out of there. So, I will take a motion to enter closed session for eight reasons, 8C and 8H.
So moved.
Second.
Great. Motion by Mr. Green, seconded by Mr. Drew, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Ms. Berkmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Middlestat, yes.
Okay, so we will enter closed session, it's 8:09. Thank you.
Alright, I need to reply. We're good.
Okay, we will reconvene at 10:32. Can I get a motion to reconvene into open session?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Green, seconded by Mr. Drew, call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Ms. Berkmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Ms. Knox?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Middlestat, yes.
Motion passes, and there's no further business, a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Support.
Motion by Mr. Drew, supported by Green.
Mr. Green, Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Berkmeyer? Ms. Knox?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Middlestat? Mr. Moses?
Yes.
There you go.
Alright.
So, you voted yes for reconvening, right, Mike?
No. Oh, I don't know. You guys all have a good night, alright?
Meeting adjourned at 10:33.